Continue after.
Thanks.
Give her a quick look.
Right. Oh, well.
With our city.
That's right. He's got two minutes. Two minutes.
So you're gonna, are you gonna be at the fair Wednesday?
One time. Here? Yeah, I should, yeah, I should probably be, I'll be here. Finishing up papers. Yeah.
Seven thirty, so we're gonna call the regular council meeting to say a set of line to order. It's Monday, May first. If you could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Let it be known everybody's here except for Dennis.
My, my, my.
So we don't, we don't need to excuse him. We'll just have to excuse him for being tardy. Next, we have the option of the agenda. Is there any items on the agenda? Or any additions or additions? Any additions to the agenda? Looks like we might have an addition.
An addition to the agenda, and that's for.
Okay, so we have an addition to the agenda of, what is it? Four meter?
Additional four meter.
Placement.
Ever, two items or one?
There's one. There's one item. These two that you've been given, the two additional items are current items on the agenda. But if you'll notice, the, the numbers are highlighted in red. That's the current, the correct number now, instead of the one that you got in your packages.
Oh, okay.
Well, those two items.
But only one of them's an addition, right?
Sorry?
Only one of them's an addition.
The one AEW is the addition. The other two are for contracts for the, you know, this, uh, garrison DTA. Are related to that contract.
So we have the number eleven. All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to, except for the agenda. I'd most heart and heart in favor, I. Those motion carries. All right. Administrative responses to issues and questions raised during previous meetings. Audience comments.
Welcome back, Councilor Raski.
Thank you, sir.
A couple things. That televised tonight, though, moving into today's little meeting. If, uh, it can be expanded upon, item three, short-term rental ordinance. If that encompasses, and seven. The duties and role of the SRO. In school, I assume it's going to be middle school and high school. So they delineated, that would be nice for. Uh, also. Talked last time about. On item nine, last meeting on. Water and sewage fees increasing. Went back, couple meetings, talked about an unexpected increase in the meters. They're going to be at four hundred thousand. It was unexpected. Up to seven hundred thousand they want. So my question has to do with, in the age of the meters, eleven to fifteen years. So my question is, what was discussed at the last meeting? There were some numbers thrown out, and I, I think I understand that there are a couple of increases, one that started today apparently. Affecting like about sixty dollars a year for every resident. Uh, three dollars on the billing cycle. Came out to about six fifty a month. And it was mentioned that it's a cash flow issue and higher anticipated costs. So. I guess I would reference a couple. Meetings ago about this, the increase in the, the charge that we're having to output for the meters. And the Great Lakes Authority increasing their water rates. And some unexpected projects because we wanted a cash flow. Well, I guess, I don't know. I, I, I just wanna, I took some notes. Good notes, just to see, uh, you know, five percent water was, was discussed to recommend it. Was it just to protect us for any unexpected projects or?
All of the above.
Okay.
Your notes were very thorough.
Um, I mean, I, I, I noticed that sick time, you know, it went from four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand for the, the meters, the increase. And that's quite a large sum. And, uh, so we're talking six fifty a month. Some people, doesn't matter, it was bad, but I was just curious on that. Well, those two, three items, then I fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Paying three fifty for that bottle.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
The first one to see me. My name is Monica. Um, I am on the board of the Autism Society of Greater Detroit. And we just wanted to introduce our organization to the city and the council. Um, so a little background, about eight years ago, a handful of small autism society chapters closed their doors. And the national organization went through a restructuring program. They are moving to a model where there's only a single autism society in every single state, and we are that new affiliate. Uh, we are completely volunteer-led for five oh one C three, and we currently service Oakland, McComb, Wayne County, St. Clair, and Washington counties. Who obviously fall into that. Uh, with the support of our national organization, we're looking to spread out within the next five years through all of Michigan. Right now, we're really focused here in McComb because we live in Warren. Um, our main purpose really is to be the connection between individuals and families who require services and the services that are currently provided themselves. We offer a, a variety of different programs, mainly supportive, such as. Uh, we have some meetups, we have virtual support groups, um, but our biggest purpose is that we have this twenty-four hour information referral line. Which you can find the number of on our Facebook or our website. Um, and currently in Central Lake, my attention that you guys did not know that we have just received a grant and are currently working on. The new blood, their community garden, right here in the Central Lake community gardens. All of the information, must have it anyway, is on the website. Um, I did just send Peter, who I met, um, at an event that was last week. A bunch of information about it. So if you guys are curious, free to hop on the website, um, or call me or talk to Peter. And that was basically it. I just wanted to let you guys know what's going on, um, to make sure that you're aware that. We're actually having a pretty big program that we're working with here in Central Lake itself. Um, and I'm very proud to be neighbors.
Thank you. Welcome. For the gardening with, uh. I've got, my wife's got six beds over here, so I'll be there with you. Thank you. Councilman Raski and I build beds over there, so we'll probably be building a couple more this year. Right. Is there anybody else in the audience comments? There being no opposed that portion. Next on the agenda, we have business of the month. And the business of the month is.
Good evening. As you know, there are many successful businesses in journey, this is one section. We like to highlight certain businesses for their dedication, community involvement, and commitment to the city. As a reminder, business of the month recipients will be highlighted on the city website over the marquee signs and the over section. I'd like to recognize anytime heating and cooling as our main business of the month. They offer a wide range of services that include air conditioning and furnace repair, HVAC services, and regular maintenance. Anytime heating and cooling is located at twenty-four V eleven Bandit Avenue. And again, I'd like to congratulate anytime heating and cooling as our main business of the month.
Excellent. Is there, nobody came? Tell them we said congratulations. Right. Next, we have proclamation. And. This is April thirtieth through May sixth is the fifty-fourth annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And we have pretty amazing. Clerk's office here, and I'm sure she doesn't want me to read this whole thing because she wants to get out of here. But I do want to recognize Janice Park Grant for being an excellent city clerk and doing a wonderful job for our elections. And especially in this time when it, elections have fallen under deep scrutiny in this last few elections. We've really, um, come out clean, and it's due to her office and her, her good work and. And she doesn't just do that, she also helps out with everything else, and she's on beautification now with me, so. But, uh, I want to say congratulations and Municipal Clerks Week.
Thank you.
Right. Next on the agenda, keep me moving on. Um, boards and commissions, library commission. We have, uh.
That's Mr. Mayor's, uh, Marjorie Murray, uh, coming, uh, for another five years and Eileen Butner for one year.
There's no objections. I'll entertain a motion to approve these.
The pointies for the library commission?
And motion to have support? Close motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have request for approval to purchase fire decks turnout gear, West Shore Fire.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is a, uh, request to order turnout here. Uh, the details are in the narrative, but unless you want to be ready to. Well, move on, uh, for your, uh, destruction.
Uh, I think everybody probably read this. I know I did, you know. We got. Six new officers, and we need five sets of turnout gear. That makes sense to me.
Sure.
So if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to council waive the bid requirement and approve the purchase of the fire deck's turnout gear from West Shore Fire.
Motion to have support. Or on favor, I, I, close motion carries. Next, we have the need for the approval to sell a Hyundai to the highest bidder. Well, we don't want to sell it to the lowest bidder, so.
Uh, you see the, yeah, two offers for the vehicle. Uh, this vehicle is, uh. Not a necessary piece of equipment for.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on that? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I made the motion that, uh. City council waived the third bid requirement, approve the sale of the Hyundai for fifty-nine hundred. Kevin, a home.
And motion to have support?
Support.
All in favor, I.
I.
Close motion carries. All right, next. We have request for approval of short-term rental order, that rental order.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council, the proposed short-term rental ordinance is, uh, attached. Following several failed attempts by state legislators to circumvent local control of short-term rentals. Uh, the city manager and attorney reviewed the current, uh, city's current non-owner occupied. Occupancy ordinance and recognized the need to create an ordinance specific to short-term rentals. After reviewing several of the ordinances for short-term rentals, the understanding and understanding the city's current non-owner occupancy ordinance. The city attorney has submitted the attached ordinance, which is recommended by the city manager for adoption. Well, I do want to point out that, um. The number of days identified in this proposed ordinance says seven to thirty, and. Um, I have spoken to at least one year of Airbnb operator in the city, and we thought that, you know, they'll lose too much business because most of their business is coming with two days or. Three days and that kind of thing. And, um, so, um, I indicated to him that, you know, I'll bring that to your attention, and then you guys can adjust, uh. Uh, the definition of a short-term rental. Uh, number of days.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I, I, I know some of them are for a couple of days. It's not for seven days, so that would, uh.
And you know, with regards to short-term rentals, if they're registering a short-term rentals, most of the companies out there that deal with these properties. Very specific roles. So if a party occurs in a rental, uh, run by verbal or Airbnb. Um, the, the property owner can report that to the company, and then those people would never be able to. Uh, rent again and, and through those two companies. Is that a guarantee that we won't have parties? Absolutely not. Um, but I, I think that it gives us that guarantee, uh, uh, or at least a level of guarantee that, um. Doesn't, um, interfere with people's, uh, right to have a gathering at a home in which they're rented. I mean, we don't want to restrict that. Uh, we just want it to be a peaceful environment. People aren't, whether residents' neighborhood pieces be interrupted. And we can do that through the nuisances that we currently have on the books.
Yeah, nuisance ordinance, we cover that, right? Yeah, we want to. Right. Anybody have any questions on that?
You have any, uh, run reports on how many issues we've had at Airbnbs? How many do we have at least in the city?
Uh, uh, no. Um, but you know, what we, what we do know is that we have about five units in the city that are identified as Airbnbs. At least two of those are owned by one person. You know, the, what we have learned is Airbnb properties are actually pretty well maintained, and, and. The upkeep is such that, uh, people, each time it's rented out, it's, it's almost like a brand new, you know, clean place for the people. So it's like a hotel room in a sense. It, but we do, and, uh, we, we're doing this for the purpose of protecting. The city and the other residents, uh, to keep and make sure that these people are, they'll do have regulations in place.
Any different kind of inspection that we're doing for those, or just the same?
Inspection as a rental inspection, just be identified as short-term, so that we would know when they're registered as a short-term. Um, you know, uh, it, it can be found out through our records by a public safety officer, for instance, if they're looking into it. Um, they should be able to, uh, discern what properties are Airbnb, we have registered in the VSNA. So it's a component that we're gonna have to add to the VSNA, but.
Does this exempt? People who are selling their house and have to rent it for a period of time in between because they haven't come to a closure? They're closing, because we don't want them to have to.
It will impact them in the sense that it's either short-term or long-term rental. Because if they rent the property to somebody other than a family member, no? Then it becomes a problem because it's a liability, and we have a law in place that says it's a liability, so. Um, you know, uh, so right now, the non-occupied is anything above thirty days. So if they are trying to sell the house and they rent it out for sixty days, right now, it's known as a non-owner occupied. And has to be registered, sorry.
But if.
And you're, you're, you're suggesting maybe that we waive that for.
Well, I'm suggesting that we take a look at that because real estate agents, and, and in a transaction like that. It has happened before. I mean, it happened to me one time when I was at Superior, where, you know, we couldn't, we didn't have a closing until. Thirty days after I got there, and so I had to pay rent for a month.
I got you.
And I wouldn't have wanted to have to register, or I, I don't think that somebody selling their house would have to register. See, a person is going to be living there and buying that house. Really one of the, you know what I'm saying? Because when, uh, on the sale of a house, you're already doing an inspection, they gotta do another registration for renting it for a month. That just seems like an undue hardship.
Well, the key is, is equal treatment, and, and I would say, um, that. That, that the law, both non-occupied and short-term rental laws can be amended to exclude. That definition or the. Uh, the, the issue that you're talking about here, the circumstance, um.
I just don't want anybody to get caught up in, in, uh.
You can have an exclusion. You can add.
I'd like to have an exclusion because I had just the opposite. I had the person I bought the house from, her house wasn't ready. And she rented the house for sixty days from, from us, the original owner. So why did she have to? She ran, living there.
Both ways.
Yeah.
How would, uh, you propose that they show evidence of that, a purchase agreement? Because we would need.
I think you'd have to, I think we might have to probably table this, you know, take a look at it, discuss it with maybe somebody that's more versed in real estate. To make sure we word it properly, because I don't want us to be exposed, but I also don't want us to, to hinder, uh, uh, you know, people that were trying to sell their house.
Right. This is why they, we, one of the dads discussion, I guess, self, the. You motion table it then?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to, uh, to table the short-term rental ordinance. All right, I have a motion to have support. Favor, I.
I.
Take a look at that. Once we get. All right. Next on the agenda, we have request for approval of contract AGP, AJP, commercial shredding and for the USAG DTA under the IS. IGSA solid waste. And recycling management services.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council, as you may recall, the, uh, administration had received previous approval to, um, uh. Propose and then ultimately contract with, uh, US Army Garrison, like the flag tank arsenal, which is located, uh, on a mile road in Warren. Uh, for the provision of solid waste and recycling services. Um, this is part of, uh, the intergovernmental services agreement program, uh, that we have already begun doing with our engineering. And now with solid wings. And, um, this opportunity, um, resulted in, uh, the city administration. Going to each of the three contractors currently working as subcontractors of the current contractor for these services. Do you think that makes sense?
I think I.
In the end, um, I was able to negotiate with those, uh, those three contractors for the identical services with a slight change. Uh, this evening, uh, last minute change, uh, there is why they get the different numbers now in these contracts, but, uh, not this one. Uh, this is for the commercial shredding, um, of confidential, uh, documents on the base. Uh, this company, A, AJP, has in fact been doing this for, uh, USAG DTA now for approximately ten years. And, um, she was, uh, she gave me a number that, uh, uh, fit nicely into our, uh, larger solid waste management contract. Um, so she's very satisfied. She's getting more money out of it, and, uh, we're actually saving the federal government. And quite a bit of money, uh, with the way that we're going to manage these agreements. So this is the first of three agreements, and again, it's for shredding.
Are these guys gonna be doing stuff for us too now, or just?
No, the, the price that we have, though, that we have, the city has with each of the contractors. That price will be extended to us when we need shredding services. Right? The feds aren't paying for that. If we want shredding services at all, at any time, um, they will simply just tell us how much time it's gonna take and the charges for. But as they're doing in this contract.
Excellent. Any questions on that?
I'll make a motion to council waive the three bid requirement and approve the proposed contract submitted by AJP Commercial Shredding in the amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand forty-four dollars.
Have a motion to our support.
Support.
Fair, I.
I.
Close. Thank you. Next, we have request for approval of contract with unlimited recycling to provide solid waste and recycling services.
Name, uh, same basis, same narrative, um, this is for. Recycling management services for unlimited recycling. Uh, this is the one that, uh, we had a number change on the document. This is for the contract for a hundred thirteen thousand. Two oh two is the, uh, amended amount. This is in fact for the recycling management services portion of the solid waste recycling management. Uh, program at the, uh, USAG DTA. Um, this again is the company that was handling all recycling and managing, uh, the, the, uh, recycling containers going from the offices down to the, uh, larger units. They're providing labor, equipment, and, and, um, all costs, um, under this contract. Uh, so again, um. Maria of recycling, uh, unlimited or unlimited recycling services. Um, has provided us with a number that we've been able to, uh, fit in nicely with the contract that currently hold with USA GTA. USA GTA.
My, my only question is, uh, how did both the numbers jump?
Because, um, work was shifted from GFL, uh, uh, from GFL to unlimited recycling.
Okay, cool.
So that's why those two changed.
Okay.
The GFL indicated today that they were willing to do all of the items on the list for solid waste. Except for the CDC dumpster, dumpster, which is the medical waste dumpster.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, recycling unlimited or unlimited recycling is the only company out of those three that had the ability to handle, uh, medical waste.
Okay. Sound good?
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that council waived the three bid requirement and approved the proposed contract submitted. Uh, by unlimited recycling in the amount not to exceed one hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and two dollars.
Have a motion to have support.
And I want to point out, uh, as we're going into this next agenda item, um, the total, um. Anticipated revenue from just this contract, uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, beginning June first will be about fifty-two thousand dollars. And each of these, uh, uh, indicate that that money will be used to, uh, placed in, um, uh, general fund. Um, for, uh, we hope a future purchase of a fire engine. As our portion.
Nice.
Okay.
All right. Question approval amendment to GFL Environmental Services USA contract to expand the city solid waste services agreement.
I don't know that I need to do it.
You don't have to go through it again?
It's true, it's just for the solid waste portion.
This is for the solid waste portion of that contract with, uh, US. So are there any questions on this?
No, no.
If there are none, I retain a motion.
I'll make a motion that council waived the reading and approved the amendment to the city solid waste.
Have a motion to our support. On my favorite, I. All right, next we have request for approval of school resource officer agreement with Southern Public School.
Yes, Mister Mayor and City Council, um, after um a couple of uh meetings with the Centerline Public School staff. Uh Superintendent and uh Charlie wrote us their comptroller. Um, we did come to a a final agreement and that agreement is attached. Total cost to the city over three years for the S R O um under the contract is estimated to be approximately the eighty seven thousand. Eight hundred and three dollars and sixty cents. Uh, if you haven't answered any questions.
What did they, what was the hiring process for this officer?
Uh, we are usually a sifting officer who was interviewed by um. A superintendent of schools. And um a comptroller and. Uh, they they felt he was a good fit, the selected officer. Uh, our our officers are selected by the director, but that was based on um whether or not Centerline Schools would be. Uh, would be satisfied with the selection and and know that there's gonna be a match there. Uh, cause you know, obviously there needs to be an officer. Gets kids, right? And is able to work with kids. Um, officer P S O uh Valdez is the officer um that's been selected. So, uh, and he does have experience uh working with kids in the past, um, it is a. Previous life, so.
So Officer Valdez is already familiar with our school.
And uh uh he will uh start there as early as uh Wednesday. Uh, we were talking May second, but apparently he's he's gonna be in training tomorrow, so. Uh, we're hoping Wednesday he can get over there, get acclimated with the buildings and so forth, uh spend a a you know, a little over a month with them. Um, and then uh he'll be back in our clutches. Uh, for approximately two, two months and then uh he'll go back to the schools. Uh, the school district will pay for all costs relating to the time that he spends with them and we will pay all the costs. Absolutely, uh, was directly involved with the negotiations. We had him in here. To get to this final agreement.
Um, and the and the this officer is gonna work forty two hours weekly at the behest of Centerline Public Schools.
That's correct. Uh, they're gonna avoid uh any overtime as much as they can. Uh. Uh, they they're they're authorized some flexibility uh with regards to their day. Uh, but they are uh responsible for uh any of the Centerline Public Schools that are in the city of Centerline. Um, I don't believe it covers, does that cover the uh? One elementary outside of the city or do they have their own resource officer?
Well, no, that would be.
So they do have a school in Warren.
And right, they have two. Brothers and Bruce. And technically Academy twenty one, yes, so three.
Yeah, we'll have to, uh, I I'm, you know, I, that question wasn't really brought to our.
Well, where so where is this? Is he going to be in high school?
I think he'll be switching between all three schools.
For him to bounce, be bouncing around from uh school to school, but his primary is gonna be the high school. You tend to have more problems in most.
And if I can remember from the meetings, if I can remember the meetings with the the school board, I I do remember them saying. The school resource officer would only be floating between Pac Wolf and Centerline. Oh, no, none of the schools in Warren. That was from what I could remember.
Yeah, I don't think we uh actually put that anywhere in the contracts. No, but it's that it's not because it allows flexibility.
Well, section four point two serves self consideration investigation on and off school campus.
All right, are there any other questions on this?
Yeah, um, in the contract it also states, I don't remember what section I saw, um, it mentions. John Kelly. Who is John Kelly?
That's the principal. And it's gonna be the contract representative. So that name is plugged.
The principal after his name, I just saw district. I didn't see the principal aspect title after his name.
It isn't.
Yeah, it's not in there.
If it is right, because the assistant principal will still be the contract.
Section four point three. The hi highlighted red name in the one spot.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if he changes uh position, but still it's a responsibility, you know, we don't know. Not it 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 it's really not a necessary verbiage. Yeah, I mean, it it uh simply indicates who they have designated. And uh. I want to say, didn't he get identified elsewhere? Was it Joe's name that was identified elsewhere? Uh, Joe's.
Chief, did you have anything to add? There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. I thought you said no, sir.
No, I didn't, I just. It's so many of these little things will work out along the way.
Sorry, I thought I didn't hear you.
You were right, I'm just a little bit.
School resource officer agreement with the Centerline Public Schools in the amount of not fifty five percent of all of the costs. After fifth year, twenty three. School Resource Officer Grant Program, S R O G B payment is issued.
Have a motion to our support. On my favor, I. Close, motion carries, thank you. Request for approval of proposal for professional engineering services with.
Yes, Mister Mayor and City Council, this is the engineering proposal um. For uh the M I D C energy rooms uh contract or construction project. Um, so this is engineering cost uh for that project specific. As you may recall, the interview rooms are required under the Michigan uh intelligent defense uh commission. Um, and. This project is being funded by uh mostly by a hundred twenty five thousand dollar. Grant that was received through the work of Representative Stone.
Do you mean this is actually a funded mandate?
No, only because our representative ran a got the funding, yes, yes.
You know, you gotta say that once in a while if it actually happens.
This is uh engineering costs and will be covered by the grant.
Very nice. It's good news.
Good project, it's uh gonna give us these two interview rooms where a incarcerated individual will be able to now speak with their attorney. In a secure space um with a barrier glass or bulletproof glass separated. Two rooms, so um this is sort of the first stage to uh multi-stage, our hope is uh. Uh, multi-staged uh renovation of public state. To make it a little safer place for um my officers.
Anybody have any questions on this? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that council approve the request to authorize the city manager to execute the engineering proposal with A W for construction of. M I D C interview rooms. Uh, in the amount not to exceed twenty eight thousand dollars.
Have a motion to ask for. On my favorite, I. Close, motion carries, thank you. Request for approval to accept the bid from Huntington Construction Company for M I D C interview room construction.
Yes, Mister Mayor, this is A N City Council, this regarding the M I D C uh room uh construction project uh. Which is expected to uh not exceed, you know, it's.
All right, now that we engineered it, we got a building.
Right.
Anybody have any questions on that? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that council approve the bid from Huntington Construction for the construction of the M I D C interview rooms.
Excellent, I have.
Support.
On my favorite, I. Close, motion carries, thank you. Just one thing on April. You know, it's like good. It's, yeah, there's a misspelling or something, is it M D I C or M I D C?
Michigan, it it should be M I D C.
All right, and request for approval of fiscal year twenty four, I have rock salt purchase.
Oh, you guys know the story on this, right?
As we do every year and we might need it tomorrow.
Didn't I hear it was gonna snow tonight?
No, it's not. Cancel the salt truck.
Well, if there are no questions about purchasing salt this year.
I'll make motion that the council approve the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five rock salt purchases through the Farmington Hills Corporation from the. Salt com- salt company. In the amount of fifty six dollars and ten cents fiscal year twenty twenty four and fifty seven dollars and ten eight cents.
Have a motion to ask for. On my favor, I. Close, motion carries, thank you. Next, we have consideration to approve proposal for professional engineering services with A W. City engineer for additional flow metering and hydraulic modeling in the amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
The mayor and city council, I just um um. This is a tough one. We have spent, the administration has spent. Uh, the better part of two months uh meeting with um. Our friends at Michigan Eagle and I wanted to uh, you know, extend to um. Our city engineer Lou Urban, uh, who has worked tirelessly uh through A W with trying to figure out why. Um. Eagle is insisting on additional time or additional flow metering for the A C O uh task four. And the flow metering was meant to uh provide for us two years with the. Uh, twenty five year rainfall events. Um, and twenty twenty two was a dry year and they don't wanna use twenty twenty two towards the modeling. Of that process or the process of modeling so that we can determine whether or not Centerline is now. Uh, compliant uh with addressing S S Os. Um, and we we discussed in detail and I can, I want, uh, Lou can give you all the. Scientific details, um, but we we really did work hard to try and get them to understand that. Um, cost to the city for um. Or with regards to the A C O requirements was going to um essentially bankrupt the city and and we just weren't. Going to stand for that. Um, so we didn't get a compromise. They did allow and and agree that. Uh, the G L W A approach might be the approach that could save us some money. But they're not budging on the flow metering so that they can have proper modeling to where they can ultimately. Very possibly uh in the end result in us not having to invest any money. Other than upgrades to the pump stations and things like that. Um, and and the only way that they're going to, we're gonna get to that point is to do the additional flow metering. Now, Lou, do you wanna give the details on the flow metering and the and the need to change locations? Um, and what the, what you've been able to get Eagle to agree to, cause uh. Uh, like I said, Lou's been doing much of the hard work, the the groundwork on this issue and it really understands this best.
To complement what Dennis is saying, obviously, you know, the the city so hard. Um, essentially. The way the system works, its flow comes to the pump station from the city through forty eight inch pipe that's selected there through the pump station and discharge. To a mile where there's a a D W S E or a great explorability system that you discharge. When the pump station can't handle the amount of flow that comes to it, it overflows to the line drain. Uh, unfortunately, which is the, which is illegal, is a uh violation, so. Um, it's a, it's an environmental concern. The city of Centerline through its history has been very proactive in trying to mitigate. Any kind of environmental disaster like that. In the sixties, you guys separated your 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 sanitary and water system. In in the, in two thousand and one, you had the first A C O requirement, which you spent eight million dollars to. Solidify or or uh limit infiltration into your sewer systems. Um, did a downspout disconnection program. Uh, smoke testing to verify if there's any connections between storm and water to eliminate. Any storm water or minimize the amount of storm water that actually comes to um the pump station. All of this is predicated on the fact that when we have overflow sys- in the system, it's because we have s- storm water getting into the sanitary system. The E Eagle, um, as Dennis explained. We did flow monitoring in twenty twenty two, that twenty twenty two, um, uh, you know. Weather events were minimal. We had, uh, it was a very dry year and Eagle is is contending that. Since uh it was a dry year. I should explain this. When we get wet conditions and we get saturated soils, the antiseptic moisture content, which is the water table elevates in in Centerline. When we did the sewer separation projects way back when. The sanitary was the first, was a combined system, so all of the. Putting drains for the basements are actually connected to the sanitary system. So when we get the water table elevating into the putting drains. The sump pumps and all the community discharge into the sanitary. When you have that happening at the same time as you have a major rain event, a twenty four hour, twenty five year event. It it inundates the pump station with more flow than what we were contracted to be discharging to Detroit. Right now, we're in the contract discharge thirteen C F S. We need approximately twenty C F S to mitigate any overflows to a rain drain. Now Eagle is saying that because you had such a dry year, you didn't have that antiseptic moisture content in soils. That that the sump pumps weren't running. And you didn't get a twenty four hour, twenty five year event, which is equivalent to three point nine inches, inches of. They aren't accepting the data that provided. It doesn't benefit them and they're concerned obviously with the fact that um. If we were to. Go through the whole process, the whole process A C O is to is to somehow mitigate those overflowing that track. So Dennis and I are working with great lake water authority to come up with a contract. Push twenty C F S through that pump station and eliminate the need for an equalization based on the community. While we do a sewer separation project in the city of Detroit. So that we can, we can accommodate that additional seven C F S going from thirteen C F S, which you're under contract now. The twenty C F S, so that sewer separation mitigates that additional flow to the to Detroit. Eagle, um, and Dennis is accurate in stating, we have, we have um pushed back on their requests. And they are standing firm with that request. Uh, we've asked them to make, you know. Modelers, um. In hydraulic modelers, they live in the new ship, they live in that in the data points and they live in the graphs and they and the charts, okay, that's where they. Feel comfortable and we have modelers on our side that are creating the model with the modelers on their side. And unfortunately, they're not relenting in that response. The latest is. You know, you're, they're still demanding that we go forward and do additional flow metering and hydraulic modeling. So how do we, how do we minimize that cost? And that's on the very, very worst base scenario. What has to happen is they're asking us to pull meters from certain locations. And that's on the word, very, very worst base scenario. What has to happen is they're asking us to pull meters from certain locations and put them in other locations. Turn on the meters that were there previously. We had eleven meters in place, they want ten. Um they want us to record that information. So we've, you know, of course, we ask them, what is the criteria? How long do we have to monitor this until it's acceptable for you? Do we need a twenty five year, or a twenty four hour, twenty five year event, and that's. Twenty five year event means that that's.
It's gonna happen for twenty five years.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So give us the criteria. They wanted, they wanted three to five, they were arguing that they needed three to five. Significant events in the community before they would accept that.
We know they already have record of how many, essentially.
We have two, but in one of them is two thousand nineteen. So. Honestly, we we went through the 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 whole uh argument with them and and narrowed it down to, we need one event. And we need one additional event. Okay, so. We were able to get the meters in place, and we had, and I'm not talking about a twenty four hour, twenty five year event, they're talking about a a rain event that has half an inch of rain. Or more um. If we can accomplish that in a short period of time, then we can take the modern, the the meters back out. We can eliminate any more flow metering, and then it's just a model network, and that price that that is provided in your. Uh agenda packet is minimized, and that's, that was our goal.
So we got them down from five though.
Five to one.
One, one more uh, one a, one more event, um which is good, um but. If we don't have that one more event, in other words, we have a two year dry spell.
You gotta do it all over again.
It's gotta be done again until we have an event, one event.
Yeah, it's just the way it is.
Now, I I I'll tell you straight up, administratively, I'm not, I I'm not opposed, I would not be opposed if the city council said. You know, but you are obligated to do this. First off, Lou, would you answer that question?
Thank you. The A C O, um you're under your obligation to abide by the A C O. The A C O states that you have to do task one, two, three, and four. We did those tasks in accordance with the A C O during the time period. We are in compliance.
So we're in compliance with the A C O, they're just asking for more.
They're asking for more because the data that Dave Bigfield does not fit.
Um doesn't supply them enough data to actually do the modeling. And that's not a, that's not an incorrect statement.
No, there there is legitimacy.
Not an incorrect statement, but the problem with Egle. My experience is.
But who, I'm sorry.
Egle, E G L E.
You said Egle, I was.
E G L E, Egle, Eagle, whatever you wanna call it, D E Q, I don't care what you call it. The fact of the matter is, is that every interaction that I've had with this organization. They keep moving the goal line further and further down the road, and you keep spending more money to try to reach that goal line. And I don't want to get into a situation like that. Now, if you are telling the truth, or if we are to believe. That they. Are going to have an idea that this hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Might save us six million, because they might say, okay, you're right, your pump stations work fine, you don't need to do that. That's a gamble that we might want to take a look at taking, but. It's been my experience that they tend to not go in that direction, and you end up spending more and more money trying to prove that you don't need to spend more money. Until you've spent all the money that you were gonna spend in the first place.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're basically being asked to spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and waiting on Mother Nature.
Uh I mean, in the end, um a hundred and thirty thousand covers so much time, how how.
Right, it might not be a hundred and thirty thousand if it rains soon.
Rain tomorrow, it's less than a hundred and thirty thousand by a long shot.
But you won't have the pump, you won't have the flow meters in place by tomorrow.
No, we could, we could have.
I have it. Anticipating, one way or the other, I I already looked at our forces, we can take the meters and put them in place Friday and Saturday this week. And, you know, pray for that rain event.
And also, you have to hope that it's a rain event that they approve.
Yep, yeah.
Well, it's gotta be only over a half an inch.
It's gotta be what, how much?
It is twenty four hours.
It's not terrible because the ground is saturated.
You're a good point, because I asked them, I said, well, is the antecedent moisture content right now adequate for you to accept? The rain event and the modeling based on that rain event, and they said absolutely.
Ground saturate, the saturation does help our situation for sure.
Did you remember that happened last week?
Mister Mayor, uh the city treasurer has some input for you.
I'm sorry.
One conversation that I was uh party to, where Eagle did say where they would drop this requirement. Is when the city contracts to either build a retention base or go with G W uh L A uh plan. Then they will drop this requirement for monitoring. So they did guarantee us that one, but we'd have to spend six to twenty million dollars to get away from this.
Well, what if he don't?
Well, at least there's a goal line.
Yeah.
But you're saying there's a.
And move again.
Well. I don't know, guys.
I will, I will say this, they have really been um steadfast in their position.
Yeah, they always are.
Yeah, we had one person tell us that we're currently in violation. I mean.
But they are not correct.
When when it comes, we're not in violation of the A C O requirement right now, because we've we've applied, and what's saying is we're in violation. Because we are still discharging at times to the rain drain, which is, which is.
Ask, when's the last time we discharged?
Twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one.
Oh, twenty one, that's right.
But that was voluntary, that was, oh, that was a nation with G L W.
Actually asked us to do it, so that really shouldn't.
Why did G L W A ask us to do that?
I don't recall, but I I want to say that it was uh due to the fact that uh they were.
Anticipations of a large rain event, they didn't believe the system would be able to handle it all. So they requested us to do a preemptive discharge.
So they requested us to break the law.
Mm hmm.
And we did it.
Kinda take hard that or less discharge of twenty nineteen, based on the records that I already know they're saying. They're going on four years.
Well, is that, is that a proper defense, though, that they told us to do it?
Well, no, it still counts. Still counts as far as uh Eagles concerned.
Next time they ask us to do that.
Eagles not G O.
Tell them to ask you.
I'm sorry.
Next time they ask us to do that, tell them to ask Eagle first.
Oh, that's not a bad idea. Yeah, I I, you know what, listen, I've always said path of least resistance. We are trying desperately to keep this community from having to spend millions of dollars on something that. We honestly think we've achieved so much success in getting this under control. And thanks, the the, a lot of it's thanks to the residents who've been working with us on the downspout uh management program. That program was so successful, it 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 did help reduce the amount of rain in the system. And and that is, um you know, on, tha- that's something that the residents pitched it for. As long as everybody continues to do that, we think that we've solved the problem. But the problem is, is Eagle doesn't agree.
Yeah, well, in to. Statements. We did a downspout disconnection program. We have done everything we can to eliminate infiltration into the system the best we can. The, like we stated before, that that antecedent moisture content gets up into the the footing drains, and there's not much you can do. I do know this, we did have in twenty twenty one, a rain event that was uh three point eight eight, which is point zero two away from. Uh a twenty four hour, twenty five year event, so three point nine is is that limit. With that, the rain event, we were able to pump. Eighteen C F S through your pump station, even though we're only under contract to pump thirteen. The water table, the elevation in the, in the, in the wet well came up to twenty three feet, we didn't have any basement flooding. We pushed eighteen C F S, we mitigated a twenty four hour, twenty five year event through the pump station with the pumps that you had right now. That, to me, is the answer.
With no S S O.
No S S O.
Basement flooding.
Oh, basement flooding, no S S Os, it works.
You know that with the system.
And that right there isn't enough for them to know that our system works.
Not enough.
So. Since they don't accept it, say, we say, hey, you know what, we're just not gonna do this. What's the fine, or what's the, what's the penalty? For not doing this from year to year to year?
Initially, it's, I think it's five thousand dollars, and then two.
Could be, it could be dollars one day.
I think it's, yeah, and it's like two hundred a day or something like that, but it's it's, it's a, it it the the fines add up very quickly.
Twenty. Lately, I know.
So yeah, yeah, I mean, it could, it could.
Rich knows too, he's been at this meeting.
Ultimately, it could end up costing us twice as much as a hundred and thirty thousand.
Well, I think that's what the S M D A find it started at, was a hundred and thirty thousand back in two thousand and three, and now it's twenty four million. But we stood our ground. I I, you know, guys, I I'm thinking. That if we have proved that our system works. We put in these monitors and things to prove to these guys that our system works. And we can have a chance of avoiding having to spend that six million dollars. It might be the most fiscally responsible thing to do is to spend this money to prove that we're right.
Hey, and let's pray for rain.
If that's, uh, tha- that's what I'm hearing, basically, spending this way to prove that we're right.
Pray for rain, and then you hope, hope that they accept your results, which they haven't accepted our results.
Yeah, well, do we have it in writing?
You're talking about the. The uh, uh city attorney was present during the conversations, the most recent conversations that we had. Um and she did make notes of uh of the commitments that were made verbally, uh because yes, in Michigan, a verbal contract is a contract.
We do have some emails back before Eagle stating those requirements.
Okay, so if they were to uh honor this situation, I think we would. You never stand like you say that.
So uh this project uh is funded, will be funded by General Funding.
Yeah, it's.
Slightly clarified, technically, it will be charged with Water and Sewer Fund, but we will not have enough money to pay these bills. So the general fund will do a short term loan to Water and Sewer, and that'll probably last for eighteen months. Not next fiscal year, but the fiscal year thereafter, we will probably be able to repay the general funds for all the money that the Water and Sewer Fund. Will uh need to uh meet all of these uh requirements, because I am not proposing another uh.
No.
Ends all the rate increase, so although.
No, we're just.
We'll just, here, we'll hold it for a couple of years.
All right.
We do have a little bit of wiggle there, maybe.
All right, uh maybe just that horse.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing.
Oh, yeah.
We'll do everything we can to minimize. Where we're, I have, guys, it's gonna work, they will just need to quickly to get the meters in place, and as soon as we have the data. Like Eagle, with what data we can have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lou.
All right, um if there are no further questions, I'm entertaining motion to authorize the city manager to execute this proposal.
I'll make a motion that the city manager execute this proposal. Not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Have motion to our support. I.
I.
I. Prose motion carries. Are there any items on the, on set agenda that anybody would like to forward for further discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve all the items.
And motion to our support, for, on favor, I.
I.
Prose motion carries, thank you. All right, council comments, I'll just run through, remember, not on T V.
Uh kudos to D P W for hanging up the uh school banners.
Yeah, it is.
And I lost him. Rain, playing, dodging with the weather.
The festival banners, right?
Yeah.
Yep, that's a beautiful thing.
Um, May thirteenth, I know we're not televised, but think of a D P W. Have to deal with it right now.
Uh, the tea party that was held by the library commission was a lot of fun, uh I enjoyed being at that, uh. Fellow councilman Herensky and fellow councilman uh Muller were there as well, had a lot of fun. Um, other than that, let's uh, yeah, let's pray for some rain.
We can do that Thursday.
Yeah, be here at noon.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. It's Thursday.
Thursday, Wednesday.
Thursday. It's never been Wednesday, if they changed it, I need to know.
Yeah. All right, they appear on Thursday at noon.
Yes. Be there if you can.
Yep, we'll have at least one veteran there.
We're gonna have to add pray for rain. Those little slips that we read.
It's this Thursday or May thirteenth.
A little bit of turkey I have. You don't want to see me dance.
No.
Too bad we're not televised, there's lots of good science programs going on at the library uh this month, lots of good things Wesley and and the library crew are still in. Uh overtime, again, I see in March for our officers, it is five hundred and sixty five hours. I know last month it was over five hundred as well, um. And I know, you know, it ain't still coming up, but is there a, is there um?
Light at the end of the tunnel?
Yeah, that we go back to where we had it at three hundred uh previous. Cause I I, and the reason why I I've been, I brought it up the last two months is because a a resident brought up this ring doorbell cam. Cam, and I take it with a grain of salt too, because he could have modified it, but. He said he hasn't seen a car come down, a police car come down the street. Which um I was, I was like, okay, and I looked at his ring and he sped it up, and there it is, and there it is, and there it is, and there's not. One. From his ring door cam, there wasn't one officer, police car come down the street. So I kept an eye out the last few weeks on mine too, and either they come down at night and they don't come down during the day, and. I, and I see five hundred and sixty five hours, and I see the road coverage, a hundred and three hours overtime, and you know, desk, a hundred and eighty one, and. And I'm, and I'm just trying to, in my head, I'm just like. Five hundred and sixty five hours, where where are they all? I, I, how can a guy with a ring door cam not see? One car for a, for a month, and that's, I just, he could have manipulated it, but. I don't know, i- is there a light at the end of this, for I, for this uh overtime that we're seeing last few months?
Well, first off, our cars don't go down every street in the city. Not that we don't want, it's just that they don't patrol. They patrol the areas where we have the most problems. Recently, like I just told you, we have problems with people speeding on Arsenal. Evelyn, Helen, we have our cars dictated to those areas to work on a regular basis to pick them up. So they're not gonna be patrolling every sh- street in the neighborhood. Those streets that don't have problems. They might not see a police car for a while, unless they're going from point A to point B, or from a call to a call to a call. If you look up at our volume of calls that were taken, it's it's a lot higher than it's ever been. We're getting more and more calls of more serious natures, things that we didn't get before, we're getting in in large models, D V's, stuff like that. Now, we're also at this juncture, we have technically enough people hired, well. One down, because we're still filling the slot for S R O, but we have people that have to go. That are in the police. But we have people that have to go, that are in the police academy right now, that's going to go into the, uh. Police Academy in the future, uh, we still have people that have to go to the fire academy, so we would go, though numerically, we're up to speed. We just don't have the bodies currently working right now. And then you add in, uh, additional call volumes that we have, they're all over the place. And then I'm not saying he's, he's wrong, he's probably a hundred percent right, there wasn't a police car down the street. You know, I've, I've had every street, we, well, it's not that we don't patrol, it's just that we don't get to every street, this is the best way to put it. They go, officers go where their call, and the, the model calls we get are tremendous. Now, because we're, we were short, you're still getting the remnants of, uh, because we're actually two months behind with some of our reporting things. Um, we're finishing up from where we had people in training that couldn't do certain things, so we had to cover the desk and cover this.
So what do we? I don't remember, but what do we budget for, like, overtime average?
I can't, with the new budget system, I can't give you a number now. Because our, our overtime budget is divided into five different lineups.
Okay.
Just for P S O's accounting dispatch.
Cuz I don't, I, cuz maybe that's a question that I.
Well, that's a question for the, the treasurer, are we, are we under budget, are we within our budget?
Probably not. We never are, it's, it's, the problem is, is a retention of officers. By kind of, we train these guys, we, we give them good jobs, they do well, and the grass is always greener on the other side of the fence. I've been here eleven years, I've had one month where I had a full department, one whole month. Eleven, over eleven and a half years, that we had a full department, everybody went to work, just one month. We're always fighting that, that, the problem is, and it's nobody's fault, let me explain, it's nobody's fault. We went from a thirty-one man department to twenty.
Remember again?
That's, was it forty-two percent? But our, unfortunately, our numbers went down, but our call volumes gone up exponentially. I mean, we're, you know, we've gone other days of the six thousand runs per year, we're up to like ten, twelve. Easy, we're up to fourteen, pre, pre-Irida COVID, we're running fourteen thousand runs, which is over double than when I started. So, you know, these things all play a part.
That's all good information, I mean. I didn't know.
I'm not making excuses, I'm just explaining.
Well, it was, it's like a two-part question, you know, one was the question, you know, you answered, and then the second was, can we maintain this overtime? Through our budget, and that's probably more of a question for our city treasurer.
I don't have my detailed financial report in front of me, but on the report that I, uh, was sent last, got it? Uh, we do track, we started tracking this fiscal year, uh, overtime in different categories, so we have a better idea of planning for the future. We're tracking overtime for training, we're tracking overtime for short shift. We're trapping, tracking overtime for prisoner detail. We're tracking P S O overtime, especially that is spent doing dispatch, because we may be short on dispatch. And then the final category is a catch-all, and I'm adding one more, uh, coming up in June, and that is for special events. Um, I'm not sure how much overtime we spend on special events, but that'll be another bit of information that we will glean by the end of the fiscal year. I can recall, we're between two hundred, one ten, two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Potentially in overtime. Not sure where we're going to end up this year, but that financial report will give you an idea where we were through March. And then if I remember last year, the payroll around the festival for overtime was around twenty-one thousand dollars. So, might give you a better idea where we're going. Uh, but once we can get through one full year of tracking overtime through classification. Uh, for example, if we have a full department, then I would say there's no reason to have as much overtime for short shift or shift coverage. In a, in a subsequent fiscal year, like we did in a year when we were down three, four, five people. So that means we should be able to cut overtime in the future. Prisoner detail, that's sort of difficult. Um, training, I think we have more training this year than we've had in prior years, so that would probably be up a little bit.
I can explain that. This is probably the only thing that makes the most sense. We received a fifty thousand dollar grant for returning and retention. And as you know, I will take full advantage of every penny of that training fund. The only problem is. It costs us overtime to send guys to school. Because either we leave them from their strength, somebody's gonna have to cover, cuz we're at bare bones, bare bones. So with this extra fifty thousand dollars worth of training, which I've taken full advantage of. The sending our, our guys to all sorts, to all the training they need, I brought up all our M F R stuff, I brought up all our active shooter stuff. I, I over, you know, got the, um, fire training, police cam, all that stuff, I'm sending people to. Cost overtime to send them, cuz we don't have the extra bodies to cover the shit. So unfortunately, that nice, beautiful grant we got helped us greatly on training, but it's killing me on overtime. Because I gotta pay them to go to school.
And the training grant does not cover the overtime, it only covers the cost of the education.
So that's where that's been up.
Uh, but we do have one grant that actually is paying for an officer to be trained. And this was a new grant that was just amended by the legislature at the beginning of March. And that's if you send a new hire to the police academy. Uh, M calls will reimburse the local unit up to twenty-four thousand dollars to cover costs of tuition. And all personnel costs, and we are taking full advantage of that. This fiscal year, and most likely, once again, next fiscal year, so that's the only grant that covers salaries and.
Our, both the salaries, the grant was originally set up. Twenty thousand dollars to go to the police academy, four thousand dollars for salary, which is ridiculous, because that's less than a month's salary. And I don't know any bougie police academy that would spend and cost twenty grand. So, through the M A C P, we were able to work with the legislators to get it, so if they give you twenty-four thousand. Whatever you don't pay for sour, or for a, a police academy, you could use that on all the rest of that money for salaries. That just came to fruition here about a month and a half ago, and we're taking advantage of that too.
That's for one person.
That's just one person. So it's supposed to help with some of the costs.
We have three born training?
Right now, I have one person that's finishing up the police academy, we've done the day before, uh, the festival. And I have one person who's in the hiring process, we're waiting for him. He just took his M P O's physical ability test, if he passes that, we're gonna sponsor him for the police academy in the fall. And then I have one officer still on, uh, uh, military leave that's coming back in September. He will be going through his F T O program, and he's gonna hit the spring fire academy. Because by the time he gets back from Syria, he's gonna miss the start of the fire academy. So I'm doing a lot of juggling.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'm good on that, yeah.
All right.
I wish we were, didn't have so much overtime, but.
Well, so a lot, I, I, I do not like calling people in on overtime.
I hate asking.
No, I don't mind. Look, I, 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 my world's an open book to you.
I know.
And if I can't explain it properly to you, then there's a problem, but trust me, I. I know guys that get stitched up on the way home from work.
There's one bit of overtime that I do have a good number on, we spent approximately six, seven hundred and twenty-eight hours to fill, uh, for overtime to fill a vacancy we had in dispatch. So overtime definitely this year is up by at least seven hundred and twenty-eight hours than what it normally is. Because of that particular vacancy.
That still doesn't include, uh, the, uh, festival.
No, I'm just talking dispatch.
That's a whole different set of numbers.
It would be especially what someone was coming up with.
Yeah, we've seen an officer turbine, turbine's been doing a lot of overtime with that.
Yeah, he, he likes to live here, he's got a cat.
Uh, just one last thing there. For, um. I walked into Burger and One and, um, they had no idea that the Independence Festival was coming, and maybe this is more for Brandon, maybe you can stop by.
They actually did.
Okay, cuz I mentioned it to him like a week, oh, you did, okay.
I personally talked to the over on the phone as well. And then he told us he was interested in attending, and so I did personally talk to the over.
I warned them, right down the dang street, so you might wanna, I.
They said they weren't interested at this time, because they just opened up their.
They're gonna be hammered. Yeah, well, it's a good thing. It was, it's pretty good.
A good burger.
Thank you, man.
I got nothing, cuz I'm gonna try to get Janice out of here.
Sorry, Janet.
I'm gonna go vote.
Well, I have about ten items. Due to a voice box issue, I will not do any of it.
All right.
I'll expect an email in the morning.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Our motion to our support. Okay, right, I propose motion carries, thank you very much, you don't gotta go home, but you can stay here.